Coming up, a conversation with Jamin Johnson, candidate for at-large Colorado Springs City Councilor.
This is Sixty Thirty Five Media.
Casting an informed vote is your right and your duty as a citizen. I'm Brian Grossman, Executive Editor of Sixty Thirty Five.
And I'm Shelley Roers, spokesperson for the League of Women Voters at the Pike's Peak Region.
We're teaming up to bring you conversations with candidates in the April 2023 Colorado Springs City election. So this interview is both an episode of the new Sixty Thirty Five Vote Podcast.
And the League's Making Democracy Work Podcast. So let's get to it. Jamin, why don't you get us started and just tell us a little bit about yourself for a couple of minutes?
Sure. Well, I'm a longtime resident entrepreneur. I have lived in Colorado Springs Southwest side for a little over twenty-two years. Eighteen of those with my wife. We ran a, she passed away a couple of years ago, but during that time we were, we ran a few businesses. We raised some fur babies and we, I got pretty heavily involved in the politics here locally, so.
Okay. We'll just get right into some topical questions then. First question has to do with water conservation and development. What's your stand on the one hundred and twenty, one hundred and twenty-eight percent water rule for extending water and other utilities to flagpole-annexed developments?
At this time, I did, I do support the compromise of the one twenty-eight. I had some questions as to where the one hundred and thirty, where those numbers were, came from. And so I do support the compromise at one twenty-eight. What I would like to do, you know, if I was on the dais, I want to look into these details further because I am opposed to any ordinances or that would effectively cause monopolies, which is on the surface what this appears like it may, may do, putting the majority of development into one person's hands, so. I did, I do think that we should look at it again. And, but water, I tend to agree with Councilmember Henjim on this. Water is very important, something we definitely need to look into. I just was unclear as to where they came up with these exact numbers, and I think that was echoed by a couple of the other council members. So I do support at this time the compromise they came to, but I would like to revisit it.
And overall, as far as annexations go, what's your opinion as far as how the city annex is currently?
Well, I'm one that believes that we have too much sprawl, and I think that we need to hold developers accountable for more infill with a focus on affordable housing, of course. And I think that as, as we consider each annexation, we need to consider pairing it with some development in the urban areas in order to provide that. And, and make sure that we hold our developers accountable to providing affordable living, especially for senior citizens and, and single families, uh, single parent families.
Okay, thanks. Shelley?
So kind of along the same lines of water, right? We use a lot of water for landscaping.
Yeah, we do.
We waste a lot of water for, you know, golf courses, resorts, neighbors who have Kentucky Bluegrass. I, I, you know, we're all at fault here for wasting a lot of water. How can we do better there, number one? And then kind of, you may have already answered this just before about annexing, but should the city consider extending water and/or other utilities to subdivisions that are located outside the city that might never be annexed as part of being one, basically a regional water provider?
Well, those are, those are some really good questions. The first part, we have to take more self-accountability for how we, we treat water there. I think the city can approach by really broaching the subject honestly and having more public service announcements, more information for the public as to the importance of water conservation at this time. The importance of water to the region and how we're just one link in a chain and how far it goes down. And our responsibility to those neighbors and to those communities that, that are even further down the line from us. And so there needs to be a greater emphasis on what control we have as individuals, as businesses in, in playing that. And so to that effect of the golf courses, the landscaping and such. And then I apologize, will you remind me the second portion was about annexation?
Well, again, you've got areas that may never be annexed into the city, but they may need water. And as being a provider, should the city step up to the plate and say, look, we understand you are part of this community as well? Should we provide water to those types of communities?
Well, I think, and, and your point leads me into something. My biggest contention with this is that we're not working in concert with the county. And I don't see how we can have an effective rule when we're not working with the county that encompasses us. And this, and then when we've restricted these, then what we're doing is we're forcing them further and further out, these developments. And we're going to end up with this donut where we have a dilapidated center and, and all our new developments are further and further on the outreaches. Now, I do believe that we have a responsibility and I, I believe in responsible growth. So I don't want to limit our growth. I want to do it at a rate that we can handle. And I want to make sure that no communities are left behind either. So rather than just continually making new developments further and further out, we need to rein some of that in and make those developments, those proposed developments contingent on infill projects. And that's really what I think we need to do. And then it has to be done where we have uniform rules through, both with the city and with the county. Otherwise, it seems rather moot. It just seems like what we're doing is pushing them out into the further regions.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Jamin, where do you stand on accessory dwelling units being allowed in single-family residential areas? Sort of a personal property rights question.
From the perspective I am, I am in support of it, you know. Affordable living is a, is a very big problem for this city right now, something that touches me personally and affects many of the people I know. And so right now, we have to do all we can in order to open things up to everyone. But again, this is where we need to come back to our developers and make sure that this infill is being done.
Just sort of a follow-up to that, would you support ordinances that allow all communities to have accessory dwelling units? Or would it be neighborhood by neighborhood, case by case basis?
I think that, yeah, no, in respects to your neighborhoods, you have to do it in a neighborhood and case-by-case scenario. I want to say to the property, but definitely to the neighborhood, I think that each one needs to, to be considered. But where those needs are, are highest, then it should, it should be considered heavily.
Do you think it should be up to city councils specifically, or should it be up to? A prior candidate mentioned HOAs and how that should be HOA responsibility. So just to clarify, would the city be making these decisions specifically for the neighborhoods, or would you?
I think the city has to make the decision. However, I, I would encourage that there be a protocol where first it, it goes through some sort of local board. If an HOA is applicable there, then I think the HOA should make that decision before it's brought to city council, of course. I don't think we should be making a decision and then the HOA figure out whether they're comfortable with it. But yeah, I do believe that it should first go to whatever local boards there are and then come back and then come to city council. But I think city council should have final approval. I don't think the HOA should be making those decisions on their own.
Okay, thanks. Shelley?
Speaking of, of housing as well, kind of one of our other big issues. Not everyone can be a homeowner. As a Realtor, we know that.
As a customer, I know that.
I was gonna say, right? And not even some people can afford, you know, some, a one-bedroom efficiency apartment rent anymore, really. Even on twenty dollars an hour job. So my, my question to you is wanting to lead a city that's growing exponentially over the next ten years. How do you, what would, what does a plan look like to you to address some of our affordable housing attainability, sustainability, the crisis, whatever you want to call it? How do we address that?
Well, I would say it's a crisis, yeah. I think, as I've, as I've stated several times, I think that pairing projects, holding developers, having, you know, proposed projects approved based on paired infill projects is probably one of the best ways. First, it's going to rein in some of the development. We're growing at an unbelievable rate and it, and it seems to just keep going further and further out. I think that would rein in some of the sprawl and it would cause more focus on, on the center, bringing our neighborhoods up to standard. This is one of the most beautiful cities in the world. We, we have such historic and, and yet there, the dilapidation is becoming near embarrassing. And I think that if we allow, if we hold, if we make the developers agree to do more projects with a focus on historic preservation, with a focus on affordable living, then we, and to make some of these, pair these projects together and make approval on one contingent on their agreement to another, I think that would be probably one of the best ways to approach it at this time. And then I think that in conjunction with that, we can revisit some of these water restrictions because when we've slowed the pace through this new mentality, I think then we can start looking at whether or not we can loosen up some of these water restrictions because one of the reasons we have to look at these water restrictions is how fast we're growing and how many projects are being brought before us for approval. If we can limit how, how quick it's happening and bring some of it to what we already. The question is whether we have enough water to handle the growth. We, if we reestablish some of our areas, if we bring them back to our standard, then that's already serviced areas. Am I, am I making sense? This is areas where water has already been accounted for? And we can bring those back to the standard that, that matches the city, you know, so.
It's a lot of infrastructure that needs to be updated, right? I live on the west side, so just to kind of think about my, my neighborhood. We've got, that's a lot of infrastructure that would need to be updated that is literally just eroding away underneath our roads. But that's a, I'm sorry, that's kind of a whole nother conversation.
That's a very good conversation. Let's have, I mean, that brings me back to the sprawl. We have, we have new roads being built. We are trying to figure out how to extend our services, utilities, transportation, emergency services. And yet we haven't even adequately serviced the, the areas we already have. So exactly, why, why do we have dilapidated roads in one area of town and we're approving new development in another area of town? That is, that is, so you're right, it's a big conversation to be had, but the two, the two actually go hand in glove and need to be addressed. Some of our issues need to be addressed in, in the broader scheme as well, yeah, so.
Thank you, sir.
You mentioned emergency services, which is a good transition to the next question. How would you address public safety needs? Colorado Springs Police Department short between fifty and seventy officers from its authorized strength. And we've seen crime on the rise. We broke homicide records last year and traffic fatality records. So what do you do about public safety?
You know, that's, again, that, there's no easy answer there. But you know, my father, he, he was a firefighter for thirty years and then he was a police officer for fifteen?
That's interesting.
Yeah, exactly. And I was, I was actually joking with him the other day, that old adage, you know, no one likes a police officer, but everyone loves a firefighter, you know?
But he went from, he went the other way, right?
He went the other way. But you know, I asked him and he said it's true, you know, he's, he's seen love and, and appreciation and respect from, in both positions. But it is true, you know, firefighter is always showing up and he's always just saving the day.
Always the hero, right?
He's never writing a ticket. He's never, you know, he's never telling you, you need to turn your music down. That, that's not his job.
Right.
Likewise, police officer is a job no one wants anymore. I think that's one, we have one of the better communities. Our, our community actually very much values their law enforcement, I feel, on, on the whole. And, you know, and, and, and our law enforcement also takes critique quite well, which I think is something that's unusual as well. And so I, I think that we, but the fact that we still have a hard time getting officers and even this more desirable community to be an officer in states to a more national problem. And the thing is, is no one wants to be a police officer anymore, but we've tasked them with every dirty job there is to do and in, in civil service, you know? And, and so I think creating even more, which the city has done, but I think creating even, even more ancillary authorities would be the best route to go. I'm not sure that maybe police officers should be responding to noise complaints or home, you know, some, some issues, the homeless, certain issues. I think they have a very important job to do. I think that it's something I've heard for a long time, that they're often not able to perform the more dire tasks because they're busy taking care of these miniscule endeavors. So I think if we could create organizations that we give the authority to, to act and, and can cite people, get, give tickets, arrange court dates, but we're not, then we can bolster our police force. I think they would appreciate that. I think it would take a lot off their hands, so.
What about pay? There's been discussion about how pay in the county and with the police force doesn't quite match surrounding areas. Any, any thoughts about that?
Well, one, I don't know how you could pay that job enough. But two, you know, I would say the same with school teachers. I would say the same with anyone that has to interact with large portions of the community and deal with multiple, multiple problems, so. But I do think that we, that our officers here in this community deserve a fair comparable pay, leaning to the higher end of what is comparable for the city size. But at the same time, that should be coupled with, with accountability. There should, there also, I am a strong believer that there needs to be more accountability in our law enforcement too. And I've had those discussions with my father and, and we've just, we've talked about it. We've talked about when he's walked away from organizations and, and transferred because of what he couldn't deal with, what, what he was seeing. And what he was uncomfortable with and how he felt that there was really nothing that could be done about it. So I think there needs to be more transparency from law enforcement. But I do believe good officers deserve a good pay and that's my belief, so, yeah. I would support higher salaries for law enforcement.
Okay, Shelley?
So kind of one along those lines also that of tasks that sometimes the police are given that they really shouldn't as an ancillary authority. I don't know if you've used the GoCOS app before, but a lot of the complaints that the City of Colorado Springs is now using is go to this app and the police aren't really, it's more of a community service directive of the police that's dealing with those noise complaints or, you know, the, the car that's been parked in your yard, in front of your yard for, you know, too long kind of thing. But one thing that the police do get a lot of calls on are the homeless, right? So, you know, taking that off of their plate, hopefully it shouldn't be on their plate anyway. How do we as, you know, this is a pretty big role as city council. How do you as a city council member work with what we have, first of all, and how do we, how do we do better? I'm going to keep using that word because I'm former military and we can always do better in everything. And this is one where we really could do some, do better. How do we do that? What's your plan?
Well, I, you know, at one time years ago, I had proposed that they take, take one of the Sam's Club off Academy and since it had garages and stuff and that they make it both a temporary shelter as well as a, like, a skills training center, different stuff like that, and a, a job placement center. This was an idea I had years ago, but you know, as I look at it, as I continue to revisit it, there, again, there is no simple answer to the homeless issue. I will tell you, I misunderstood the problem years ago. And I was challenged by a council member at that time because I had a pretty blanket view of how the council was approaching it and I, and he challenged me to spend time, real time, with the homeless, and I did. I spent many hours a day for about a month and a half and it, and it opened my eyes. And there are so many people that ended up there for no fault of their own. Some, some great calamity happened to them where now they're facing houselessness. And I'll say houselessness because they have a home, just like we all do. They chose Colorado Springs as their home and that's their home. But they are experiencing houselessness and they are just looking for an opportunity to get back on their feet. I did, like I was told by these council members, I did encounter those who seem to have no desire to improve. What I did notice in those situations is there seemed to be a stronger presence of, of mental illness. And so I think that we, that homeless is a, is a two-part problem. And I think that there needs to be a strong emphasis on more programs for mental health, more availability to people for mental health services. And then I believe that there, that we need to have more programs focused on helping people. And I know they'll say there's a lot of programs out there that actually do this, but we need to find a way to bolster them, extend them, make them accessible to help people learn new skills, acquire jobs, temporary housing, transitional housing. And we have to do more to help people reestablish themselves when they've fallen onto hard times. For the, but there also needs to be a great focus on, on mental health. But that, you know, that goes for the people that are trying to get back on their feet too. One of the biggest things, one of the biggest hurdles they, they encounter is their own depression. Their own, the, the situation feels overwhelming. You know, they're, they're in emotional distress. And so I think mental, a strong emphasis on mental health is, is something that we need to really focus on when it comes to the homeless.
Thank you, sir.
We are running a little short on time, so I'm going to ask your city council pay question, if that's okay, Shelley?
Yes, sir.
So we can get that in?
My last one, perfect.
That's my favorite subject, actually.
But then you probably know the question already. The city council doesn't make a whole lot.
I'm glad you guys are asking this. I wasn't expecting that.
Should city council be paid more in an effort to expand who all can serve on council?
Absolutely. I am going to ask for their vote and I'm going to ask for a raise. And that seems really weird, but it's because I want, I need a palpable change on the dais. I need to see more of my colleagues from, you know, up there on that dais. I, I need more nurses. I need more school teachers. I need mechanics. I need stay-at-home moms. I need, I, I need, but for so many, this, the salary is prohibitive. It, it, they just can't even consider it.
I will say it's six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars a year because we do mention it. We know, we brought this question up before and I just want to include the, the figures so listeners know if, if they're not aware of what it is.
That's absolutely not a livable salary. So how, let's take a hypothetical, how does a, you know, let's go with a gentleman my age. How does a forty-two-year-old mechanic who has owned his own business for say ten or twelve, fifteen years, has run it, you know, respectfully, I mean, done quite well for himself, but maybe he has a mortgage? He has, you know, two cars? You know, he has three kids? How would he even consider hanging up his mechanic, you know, jumpsuit for a while and, and becoming a city councillor? Or a grocery store clerk that has been running the register for twenty-five years at a Kroger? Or, or like, you know, or a school teacher or a nurse? Anyone, because you know, I often hear, and, and it is true, I, I will commend everyone that currently serves on the dais. Because, I mean, you know, you, you have to say that they really must care about the community to do such a difficult job for such little pay. I think it, you know, but I think that a higher salary would also come in because it also leaves room to question. You know, sometimes, and I've heard people question their motives and I've heard them cite, you don't get paid. And I, I can never help but think, when I think of the city council salary, I can never help but think of, you ever seen the movie Brewster's Millions?
Long time.
With Richard Pryor?
Richard Pryor, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, in it, you know, he, he runs, he's trying to just waste his money. That's, that's the goal. He has to waste as much money as he can. So he runs for mayor of New York and he encourages everyone, vote none of the above, which I, I pondered whether I should adopt that as my campaign slogan, but. You know, he, but he poses the question at one point, why would anyone spend ten million dollars for a job that pays back sixty thousand a year unless they plan to steal it back in interest? And with interest. And, and you know, and it's a really good question to pose. Why would someone, why? These, and, and you know, at one time, you know, we, we now brag about who endorses us, but at one time that was a transparency tool. We wanted to know, you know, if the HBA, if, if, you know, if certain, you know, groups were, were contributing to your campaign, we wanted to know that so that we could know who you possibly were indebted to, who you might, you know, feel favor for. And now we've turned it into a bragging, it's almost a merit badge that we wear rather than a, a transparency tool that we once required. And, but to me, it's a, the thinking sometimes is, is a, you know, a little reversed. You know, you say who all your contributors are and you brag about it and, but these are some of the people you'll be making decisions for. So that's kind of like, you know, a judge for a beauty pageant saying, well, Miss Alabama thinks I should be a judge. Well, then probably not a, not a great idea, you know? So I, but yeah, I think that we need a salary that, that people can aspire to. Actually, I want a salary that is something that, that people would feel like they've actually elevated in their career by obtaining. And, and when I look at it and contrast it against the county commissioners, it does, I can't reason it. And then I think it, it's at a disservice to us. It limits who can even consider it. And when you limit who can consider it, you limit your options. And I, I want a more reflective dais. I want something that seems truly derivative of the city. Truly not the best of each, not the best of the best with unique circumstances. But, but those people, if you can, if you can balance your checkbook at home, if you've paid your bills, if you stayed on top, in fact, if you know what it's like to, to prioritize your car insurance, your cable bill, your phone, that's the person I need on the dais because they understand me. And that, and that, and I need a salary that they can live off of.
Can you give me a, a figure?
I would, I would say a minimum of sixty thousand, but I, I would like to see it. I, I don't see why it would not be comparable to the county equivalent.
Which is six figures, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think all the, maybe not all of the most, a lot of them make over a hundred thousands.
Does it? I, I thought it was near eighty thousand, but I would say sixty to eighty thousand for a city council member. I know, I know a lot more of my neighbors would stop and pause and consider. We discuss politics all the time. We discuss local politics all the time. This idea that, you know, the people, you can have all the passion you want. If it, passion without practicality is moot. So unless we have a salary that can allow the impassioned to seek it, then, then, you know, we're doing, like I said, we're doing ourselves a disservice. If you want true representation, people who understand you, who understand your plight, we need to elevate from, from ourselves. And we need to make sure that they're not continuing to be concerned with their car insurances, utilities as they serve us. And, and so, you know, and that's where we're at. No one can even consider it because of the, the current salary, so.
Thanks, Jamin.
And it takes unusual circumstances, which I happen to found, find myself in, which is why I felt like I was obligated to do this. But I would like to see reform when it comes to that so that we can continue to have a more inclusive dais. So thank you for the question.
Back to Shelley.
So any of you and all your friends talking local politics, I would welcome you as league members because that's what we do. We're all about local, especially on our level. So, but my last question is, should be pretty short, but specifically, this is kind of a, again, for those of us who are worried about voter turnout. We work, we work a lot of, you know, voter registration and get out the vote and all of that stuff. What are your thoughts on moving spring municipal elections to the fall? What are your thoughts on moving spring municipal elections to the fall to help increase voter turnout and save the city approximately $600,000 per year on those municipal election years?
I think that's a fantastic idea. I have not actually had, I've not heard of that and that hasn't been, that question's never been posed to me before, but as you stated, that sounds like an absolute brilliant idea that on, on first inspection I would fully support, yeah, actually. But I appreciate the question too, because I do believe it ties into the last one. Again, yes, I do discuss local, but the sentiments that I hear quite often is that people feel completely, they don't feel like they can make a difference and they don't feel like anything, they have all the thoughts and all the feelings and they feel like they have none of the power. And that's what I'm saying about a solid, a, a salary. If we can get representation, if we can put people on the dais who understand that feeling, then we can get better representation. And that isn't to insult anyone who has represented us so far. It is, and I'm not saying that people haven't endured their struggles, but every person that currently serves on the dais has a special circumstance that permits them to do so. I want it to be a, something that someone can consider a lateral career move, something where they can pause what they're doing and move and do this for as long as, you know, for as long as they're permitted, the term limits, if that's what they wished, so.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Jamin, we're just about out of time. Do you want to take a couple of minutes and close us out? Remind us why we should be voting for you?
Well, I, my feeling is that you should vote for me because I am one of you. I would like to see more of us on the dais. I, I don't mean to present it as an us versus them, but I do, I want to see a dais that is truly reflective. I promise that I, I have, if I put on the team colors, I promise I'll take accountability for the wins and losses, even when I, even for the track record that I wasn't part of the team. You can come to me and say you guys and I'll know what you mean. I won't take, I, what do you mean? That was all of them. That wasn't me. I'm the new guy. You can't blame me. I will know what you mean by you guys because I've been there trying to say you guys and I've watched them shirk time and again. No, this is something we've done. It's something we need to take accountability for. We'll move on from there. And then, you know, I, I, I apologize. I'm sorry. I just had something come into my mind. Can I take a moment?
Yeah, sure.
I'm sorry.
You're okay.
I apologize. I've had a.
You've had a rough day.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I would like to see more equity come to the city, more transparency, and I want to see some, some reforms, systemic reform, much like what we spoke about with the council salary. I see those as mechanisms for maintaining control in, in the hands of a few people, keeping it within a select group. I want to see small changes with major impact. And I think I know where those changes need to take place and I also will make sure that the public is aware how one leads into the other and, and try to explain it in a way where it's digestible to everyone and stuff. Yeah, I apologize. My, my apologies.
Good. Don't get nervous.
I'm going to make a side note here. We, we can edit this. Jamin, would you like me to let listeners know about your circumstances because obviously there's been a change in tone and I don't want to say it if.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I know.
I don't, I didn't, I had, I had something cross through my mind. I, so my grandmother, who I was very close with, passed away this morning and it's just been a theme lately for, for me. I'm starting to realize what a, how death is such a big part of life.
Yeah.
I lost my wife a few years ago. I've, we, I mentioned that we raised four babies. Unfortunately, I've lost them as well.
Oh, man.
And I lost, I also lost a good friend, Sharon Friedman, who did the story project here in town. I don't know if you're familiar, but, and was a friend of the newspapers as well and ran the Springs magazine for a number of years. And she passed away this December and then I lost, and then I was informed by my father that my grandmother passed this morning. So I apologize and I did, and I was, my, my sincerest apologies for that.
No need to apologize. Yeah. And I, I'm impressed you were able to come in and talk to us after hearing, hearing that news, so.
Well, she was, she was very excited about this, you know, about my decision to do this, so, you know, I apologize. I just had something enter my mind.
Yeah, totally understand. Thanks, Jamin. Everybody, you've been watching or listening to a joint podcast effort by 6035 Media and the League of Women Voters of the Pike's Peak Region.
Be sure to follow Making Democracy Work and check out l w v p p r dot org for more information regarding our candidate forms in March.
And keep checking out 6035 Vote to make sure your vote is an informed one. This podcast is produced by Dave Gardner, video directed by Nick Raven. I'm Brian Grossman, executive editor.
And I'm Shelley Rohr, spokesperson for the League of Women Voters of the Pike's Peak Region. See you next time.
Hi, I'm Dave Gardner.
And I'm Nick Raven.
We're the podcast producers here at 6035 Media.
6035 Vote is just one of a growing family of hyper-local podcasts that we're creating.
And these are for you, someone who wants to engage fully in your community.
We've got the 6035, which is a quick, lively recap of the top news stories of the week.
It's my favorite. It's really great and often funny.
I love having you as a guest, actually.
I do too.
And then we have hot takes and streaming breaks, which is a potpourri of news and commentary about movies, gaming, TV streaming, and just so much more. It's for youthful heart and, you know, that could be anyone, really.
Yeah, I'm surprised I even really enjoy it because Nick hosts that and he's, he's witty.
Well, and the cool thing is that you can watch both of these podcasts on YouTube.
Or you can listen to them on the go in your favorite podcast app.
And there's a couple more, but you can also visit sixty thirty five media dot org slash podcast to see them, browse them, sample them.
And then subscribe to the ones that you like.
And then subscribe to this YouTube channel.
Yeah. And if you really love it all, like we do, you can just, you can just subscribe to the sixty thirty five podcast network podcast, which is a conglomeration of all the episodes, all the brilliance and humor that emanates from the studio.
Absolutely. And there's a lot of it. So like and subscribe today and go listen to them all or watch them.
What he said. Good. Thanks.
Got it?
That wasn't so painful.